This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the regular September 5th, 2023 council meeting order at 7:00 PM. All rise to the pleasurable legion?
My pleasurable legion is to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, looks like we have one addition, application from Buckshot Betties to discuss, and we'll put it in new business tonight. So any other additions or corrections? Not what anyone would like to make a motion to accept the agenda with the one addition. So move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Norman. Would you call roll, please, Steph?
Baron Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any presentations? Okay, mayor's report. I do not have a mayor's report tonight, so.
I was looking forward to test on this one.
Oh, packet trivia? You know, it's funny because I actually thought about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's like one page. I could answer just about anything today.
Next time.
October.
Okay.
Okay.
Any council committee meeting reports tonight?
No.
I have one tomorrow night.
Okay.
Tomorrow night, not tonight.
Okay. So no committee reports. Products on the floor.
I didn't have any. Are you here?
Ed, are you wanting to speak to the council?
Not to you.
Okay. Okay.
Cassette agenda for acceptance. Cassette agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for August 21st, 2023.
I move to accept the consent agenda for approval.
Don't move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Councilor Webb.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Baron Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? New business you all have in front of you, I believe, application from Buckshot Betties. It looks like the event's going to be September 30th at Spencer Park.
So I can give you guys a little background. The formal reservation is coming in tomorrow for the event, but it's going to be end of summer barbecue kind of hoedown. It will be a fundraiser for Living Hope Youth Ranch to raise funds and awareness about what they do. There will be barbecue. They plan on having a barbecue competition, so they were planning on people bringing their own grills and kind of doing a little makeshift. People sign up to be in the barbecue competition, but also Holy Smoker will be there selling barbecue for the food element that needs to be with the beer garden. And so Buckshot has agreed to be the beer. It will be beer and wine only in a perimetered area, just like it has been in the past. And they're going to have kind of a hoedown dance, so Western-type dance, a couple product vendors and music. And the whole, it's open to the whole community on September 30th. That's the event that's going to coincide with this application that you have in front of you. And the last time I talked to her, she said it was going to be from like 5:00 to 9:00, the event.
Okay. Any discussion? Pretty much how they, similar to how they set up during the jamboree around the pavilion there.
Yeah, and Melissa just, she's, it's, 10:00 PM is for her cleanup.
Okay.
Breaking down.
But it begins at 11:00 AM.
Well, 11:00 is when she's going to start setting up.
Oh, I see.
Right? The event's going to be a shorter duration than the 10 hours that are there. We don't have the application for the event yet to tell you the exact hours, but yeah. And we've had.
Make a motion to accept this application.
I'll go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm presuming that Chief is.
Yeah, and we've never had, Buckshot, the last three beer gardens she's done, she's never had any over-served or any issues with the place.
I'll move to a press meeting. Buckshot Betties on September 30th.
So move. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Wagner.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving right along. This is from the departments. Okay, ordinances and resolutions, resolution number 2023 dash 11, resolution supporting assisted housing programs.
So this is coming to you from me. So we're going, working through our CDBG application that's due September 30th for the springboard sewer upgrade. One of the elements in, so we had passed a fair housing resolution in 2005. They like you to have more activity and effort in fair housing than just posting a resolution. So with our tight timeline and the activities that they'd like to see, they kind of give you examples of things you could do. We don't have the time to do any of them but adopt a resolution. So this resolution just says that we will encourage government-assisted housing as a source of affordable, safe, and sanitary housing opportunities for people of lower, middle, and fixed incomes. So should that become a possibility, should a developer want to come in here and put in low-income housing, or we could get a government grant, something like that, we would try and work towards that. So. That would be the resolution on the books to accompany our fair housing resolution that already exists.
Jezza, are they very similar, almost identical?
No, the fair housing resolution has a lot of stock wording that you have to have to promote fair housing. It's more, a little bit more regimented. This, and it doesn't include specifically this section, that we would make an effort to work towards getting low, fixed, and middle-income people housing. It's more like we, you know, well, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this is interesting because this is government-assisted housing, so that would be like Section 8.
Yeah.
Other supported low-income tax credits like Blue Heron.
Yeah. Which, we're missing a lot of that. We have a lot of people not able to have stable housing because of the market and the
Yeah.
up and down of it.
Waiting list to get into Blue Heron is quite lengthy.
Mm-hmm. I don't, I, I claim no knowledge of that.
Yeah.
That is run by the asset management and property manager, so. But I suspect.
Yes.
Yeah.
At one time, I think it was like a four-year wait, and then those people had been on for four years and still hadn't come to the top of the list.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's only 26 units in a town of 2,400. That's, it's less than 10% of that low, the need for low income.
Oh, it's terrible.
Yeah.
I mean, everywhere. It is a very, very long time.
Any questions or discussions? Okay. I'd like to move to motion to accept this resolution.
Move that we adopt resolution number 2023-11, a resolution supporting assisted housing programs.
Thank you, Councilor Webb. So move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Ash.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Baron Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving right into correspondence. Save the date, city-county dinner.
This is just sent to you guys so you guys can save the date on your calendar, and more than likely, they won't reschedule it this time. So this one's being posted by the city of Rainier.
I will be attending.
We don't have the menu and stuff yet, but.
So Wendy, when's the last time we should RSVP on?
We don't even have an actual agenda yet.
Okay.
So I'll be.
In October sometime.
Yes.
Yeah, sure. Just save the date.
Exactly. Just get it on your calendar.
I won't make it.
Okay. I won't remember between now and then, so. I'll get back.
Moving right along, city admin report.
Okay, we didn't, so the DQ decommissioning of the old dump site, we didn't get Mary Ann's dump tested last week. Mitch has got it on his list to do this week. He spent extra days painting the doors for Anderson and the lake. The paint wouldn't dry, and then he went, like, so he's just stuck in that whole thing for a few days, watching paint dry. The grandstands, that's, I don't know why that's even still on there. It's complete. The lake docks, same. We're just still waiting for ODFNW. They should be having, I believe their meeting is like September 19th for their commission review. Manhole lining. So we met with the repair company to discuss the lining and a couple other alternatives. So they have another alternative where they drill through the wall of the manhole. They force the product to the outside. So they drill through, and then the product that they use expands on the outside to stop the water inundation. But in order to do that product, it has to be a wet time because water is what activates the product. So the ground all around the manhole needs to be wet and saturated for the product to take. They also said that if we like that product, they are willing to pay for one day's fee to teach our guys how to do it. And then we could get the equipment to drill through the sides and the product and start doing it ourselves. So I thought that was nice. There are a few that the lining would work a lot better than the pressure, I don't know what the product exactly is, but the putting it through with pressure. They are supposed to get us a price for those two options this week, because the guy that came out wasn't also the pricing guy. He could give us a ballpark of around $2,000 to line basically an eight-to-12-foot manhole, but he wanted to get some firmer numbers for us to base our project on for you guys. So he'll be getting us those this week. Storm ready city, I don't even know. I'm about to just make the sign myself because I've emailed her and called, and I don't, I even tried to find someone else in that meteorologist's office to tell me maybe she's left the job. I don't know. I'm, I'm just chasing it down. The FEMA Community Assistance Visit will be taking place on the 27th of September. Ben and I finished the, like, nine pages of questions on how we do everything. We don't do everything that was on the sheet, but I think that's because we don't have some of the zones and some of the requirements because we're not a coastal community. That's what we're hoping. We're hoping we're not off on those items, but we said be, be willing to do whatever is necessary from FEMA's stance, so. They did install the electrical. We're waiting on the light to show up, and then the picnic shelter at Spencer will be illuminated at night on a timer, the same as the skate park lights and the basketball shed lights. And then we're working on the entrance to Vernonia Lighting. West Oregon Electric keeps telling us they have it disconnected. Blake keeps going there and it's still hot. So I don't know what the disconnect is unless we drag them there with us to show them what is still hot, but they're like, oh, it's, it's ready for you. It's just, he goes there and tests it, and it's still hot. So maybe they're disconnecting something else and we just need to go on a field trip. We're not, but no one's complaining about whatever they have disconnected, so I don't know. And then the camera, I'm still waiting on Blue Mountain. I'm about to call the president just to say, I just need the specs for the camera so that I can order the right pole. So that's where we're at with that one. Do you guys have questions for me?
So when are we going to get back our priority list?
Oh, I just forgot about it.
You mean to, into the public record so it'll be adopted?
Yeah.
Oh.
I didn't even tell it.
That's okay.
Sorry, Steph.
Thank you for not having done it yet, because I got.
We were talking to each other, and we're like, there's something.
Yeah, we're like, what is missing? What?
Missing here.
It's like, there's something we're supposed to bring, and of course, that's not one that's like written in somewhere until, yeah, except there's a meeting. So priority list.
And I'll actually have quite a few things for you at the next meeting. So I have your rules almost done because I got ribbon. I'll have an update from the facilitator for your guys' training. Now I'll have the priority list for you guys. I think that's it. Sorry.
And I don't know if I, if everyone's heard through the grapevine or not, but Austin did ultimately decide to go to Forest Group. So his last day was last Friday. So we are going to the applicant that we had on file to see if they're still interested in the job, and if they are not interested in the job, because we had left it open for like three weeks and got one qualified applicant, then we'll repost it again.
Kind of begs the question, then, how are we going to accomplish our crack ceiling for this year then?
Well, they're gonna, the other ones are gonna have to step up. I mean, it's gonna have to be the crew we have. There's gonna be a little trial and error, probably, like there was, because Jonathan was more of the, not the temperature setter, more of the grounds person, but I think Chris could easily.
Still gonna attempt.
We're still gonna attempt to.
Attempt to try to get it.
Try and get some done, yeah.
It's kind of a call order with everything that happens, but if we have the opportunity.
Yeah, if the weather.
Is it weather?
Yeah, you're supposed to do it when it's warmer out. And Austin was really the one that kind of had it dialed in for how to keep the product hot but not too hot, and how to turn it up a little before the next block went in. So he had tinkered with that over the course of the two seasons, the one season they had the 80 hours on, but.
And he kind of like documented some of that and some?
Well, they were there with him, so they're, it's just gonna be playing around with it. There's gonna be a little, we'll have to pick a bad area, you know, a spot in town that not very many people will see for the bubble gum kind of, because it's, it's gonna happen. We'll scrape it right up, you know?
Yeah.
Little tester, but it might not be as pretty for the beginning.
For us Scots.
No.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jezza. Items from the mayor and councils.
I'm holding you to having the test on October 16th because I will be in Durango, Colorado.
So, what was that again?
I'm holding you to the date of October 16th for the mayor's trivia because I'm gonna be in Durango, Colorado.
She wants to be out of town when it's happening, Rick.
Oh.
Yeah, that. I may, depending on how good internet is, I may be able to attend.
Okay. Get a chance to ride the train from Durango to.
We are.
I've done that twice.
Yeah, my in-laws live there, so we've done that a lot. We've done the drive. Love the drive.
Pretty cool.
The problem is the train only goes both ways now. You can't take the bus back. So it's a five-hours train. It's a long day. So. But the trees will be gorgeous. But yeah.
Let me see before you go.
Yeah, yes, I'll be here. I think we have five meetings between now and then.
Okay, anybody else? Dale?
So I did get an email back from Mr. Benassi from the.
Oh.
School. He's very interested and tried to collaborate with the city on the forestry program. So now we're into when do you have time back and forth.
Okay.
So.
Good.
So I'll keep you posted.
We're hoping the kids can help us do some of the planting when we get our trees in marked.
Yeah, great.
Kind of, you know, maybe.
Start to get a, yeah.
Overall, I mean, you know, we could get real elaborate and even coming up with a forestry plan for the city, you know, being, or at least guidance for them to think through the process. And so anyhow, from putting them in the ground to cutting them down to.
There you go.
Try to get the class kind of involved. You know, we got close to 100 acres of forest land, so.
Well, and that's the thing, when my daughter was in forestry, they built like the garden boxes for the community garden, and they did more projects with wood. And she's like, I want to be, I want, I'm going into forestry in college. I want to be doing stuff in the forest. So it's exciting that they're gonna get to.
Yeah, I mean, I could envision, you know, my cousin's in that thinning of timber-type business has kind of got, I think, it nailed down pretty good. So maybe even, you know,
Yeah.
a walkthroughs class. Okay, we need to do a thinning project. What are we looking, what are the, what are we looking for in these trees? Which ones go, which one stays?
Yeah.
And, and he's got a, a theme that the landowner seemed to agree with, that he'd been working with and for, so, you know, just things like that, you know, or doing a cruise gets a professional cruiser to come out.
That's the thing. Our community has such knowledge in that industry. We should really be producing kids that are going into those careers like tenfold compared to other places, but we don't yet. So maybe we can start it.
Good job, Dale. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, the other thing. Paula Hanta called me. I don't know if she called me the rest of the year, but ordinance 745. We're not having real good luck of prowling the problem of people riding their bikes on the sidewalks into downtown. She, she told me about her instance with the person that just basically made fun of her. You know, when she told them that, you know, we do have an ordinance and you're supposed to be walking your bike. Of course, yeah, he wasn't very receptive. Went down to the, went on, right on down the sidewalk to the skate park and was down to ride his bike, kind of kicked all the kids out of the skate park before he could ride around in there, so.
A true gem.
Huh?
A true gem.
Yes, yes. So she also relayed, I didn't, I don't remember my cousin saying, because of Steve, I guess.
Because he got hit by RNS.
Derrick Sentry. And some kid on a bike, he come out of a store and just flattened him. So, you know, we're gonna have somebody hurt. It's an ordinance that's on the books. Paula did, she evidently talked to one of her police officers. They did come up with the numbers. I think they've given a lot of warnings, but there hasn't been a citation in years, I guess. So. Maybe that's something that needs to happen. But I tried to go look online for 745. I see it's not on our ordinance page.
They don't have it scanned up?
Because it was amended. I pulled it up for Fishhawk High Cyclory.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I keep wanting to call him George.
Jeff.
Jeff.
Jeff. It's a G.
It's a G.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's on, it's online, but it was amended by another one.
Oh, okay.
Did have to look.
Yeah. So one of the things I talked about with Paula was if we are going to move to the citation route, instead of compliance, like, hey, letting them know, get off their bike. And usually if the police stop them, they walk. But maybe we put an article in the paper that says, okay, the kid gloves are off. Everyone knows this ordinance now. It's posted clearly in the downtown for anybody that isn't a resident. We're gonna start issuing citations, or something to that effect. Because I think if they're respectful and they hop off and go, oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry, that's not the person we're targeting. We're targeting the, the true little gems that decide to not listen to what anyone thinks.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's been repeat offenders, and, and those are the ones that, you know.
And I think it would take maybe three citations and no one would ever do it again. It wouldn't be worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am curious, though, because I wasn't involved when they adopted 745 or the amended one. I think it was put in when we had the schools in place. Now that's, I'm trying to understand the logic of it. I definitely understand it downtown. We have these business fronts that you step right into the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And, I mean, like the Island Grill.
Yeah.
Opening the door right out into the, I'm surprised somebody hasn't went through the door, you know?
Yeah.
So I definitely understand that. Down in front at Spencer Park, where it's wide and it's straight.
But actually.
Wide open.
I have your answer. It starts at the top of the hill. And the reason it starts at the top of the hill is a girl was face-planted and broke her teeth, getting ran over by bicycle, walking downhill in the, along, right there where the guardrail is. So it starts up there, the walker wheels, because people that are walking downhill can't see a bicyclist coming behind them on their bike in that area, and a girl went down and was injured. That's what started the whole discussion of walker wheels.
Oh, really?
So that's why it goes all the way past Spencer up to the top of the hill.
So it actually goes Texas to California and then Adams to Wade, and the side streets in downtown. So this.
Oh, really?
It is not part of it.
Not really part of it.
Oh, okay.
That was what the amendment was, was to include the hill because it's so narrow, like she said, people get hit.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's what I thought. The original one didn't go up the hill, and then all of a sudden I seen the sign going up the path, and I was like, why is?
That's what started the conversation, was a girl was injured as she was walking down the hill. The guy tried to yell at to her that he was coming and couldn't get out of the way, and then he basically hit her and she went down.
And then there was another, and I was in, in the walker wheels Lions Club when we put the signs out, and the Lions paid for the signs. There was also another woman that was injured pretty good. I think it was either in front of the Rock Creek Building or where you were talking about, by the Pelster Building right there, and she was seriously injured. I remember that. And she was hit by a bicycle. I think it might have even almost broke her ankle or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I just wanted to make sure we were, everybody was comfortable. I'd like to see the ordinance and get, make sure everybody's comfortable with that, and we cross our T's and dotted our I's before we direct our police officers that.
Well, and I think we do it with, I think we do it with notice, you know, let the community know, hey, this has been on the books for this many years. This summer had unprecedented interactions of bicyclists and pedestrians. Yeah.
I noticed quite a, a lot of violations when the skate park went in. That's basically when this all started to.
Yeah, and right there.
So.
That's not a problem. It's when they come across the gray bridge and they're on the sidewalks in the downtown blocks. That's the problem. That's the problem with the kids. And I get it, as a mom, I wouldn't want my kid riding on that tight highway either, but you can easily go one block over all the way down and pop out at any place you want without exposing yourself to the traffic, so. Might need to just, we'll put a little blurb in there. These are your alternative routes or something. Okay.
Thank you, Dale. Anything else? Okay, action item summary.
Okay, so I have that Stephanie's gonna get on that priority list to bring it for the next meeting, all tallied up. And then that we're gonna email the, that ordinance to you guys, or get it up on the website or both, let you know it's up there. That's all I have for action items.
Okay. Thank you for attending and and your discussion. So I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:30 PM, meeting adjourned.